Good morning, my name is Kent Kim. United Nations Academic Impact Seoul Forum was just held for the very first time in Asia in August. UN Secretary General Ban Ki-moon said UNAI, centered with academic communities, will become an important catalyst for the change of the world. Today, we have four honorable leaders in this area to contemplate how to strengthen the global initiatives and cooperation on higher academics. Let me introduce President Kim Young-gil, Chairman of Korean Council for University Education.
Good morning.
Welcome. President Michael Adams, President of International Association of University Presidents.
Good morning.
Mr. Ramu Damodaran, Chief of UN Academic Impact Initiative.
Morning.
Welcome. Professor Sahi Milgram, Vice President of Hadassah College, Jerusalem, Israel.
Morning.
My first question is to Mr. Ramu Damodaran. The general public may be unfamiliar with UNAI. Can you introduce UNAI in detail, please?
Sure, Kent, thanks. UNAI is about 10 months old now. It was launched at the United Nations in November last year by Secretary General Ban Ki-moon, whose personal initiative it largely is. He was really responsible in pushing it forward. He announced it first at Fairleigh Dickinson University, where President Adams invited him to speak, and since then, we followed out his instructions and came up with a plan. What it is is a global alliance, a voluntary alliance, of universities and institutions of higher learning that are committed to working to help the United Nations address its mandate and challenges. When he opened the forum, the Secretary General made it very clear that governments no longer can solve problems alone, which means the United Nations cannot do it alone. It needs the support of new partners, particularly the academic community. Today, we have almost 700 members in 104 countries. We have more than 50 members from the Republic of Korea, and they range in their disciplines, from the humanities to the sciences, public health, engineering, architecture, arts, music. So it's become very clear that there's absolutely no area of scholarship or human endeavor which cannot affect the United Nations or the lives of people around the world. And I think once we realize that, then anything that a university or an institution does makes a difference for people, either immediately in their own surroundings or completely separate geographically.
Wow, this is very impressive. This is taking a whole new step.
Absolutely, and I think what's really remarkable is that it's brought together university leadership, like President Kim and President Adams, faculty, like Dr. Milgram, as well as students. Everyone is enthused and energetic. In fact, we have a whole students' offshoot movement called ASPIRE, Action by Students to Promote Innovation and Reform Through Education. And I'm very heartened that the most dynamic chapter of ASPIRE is right here in Korea at Handong Global University.
Wow. President Kim, what is the significance of UNAI Seoul Forum in particular?
Yes, significance of UNAI is the reducing gap between developed, developing countries through education, not giving just money or capital. And education actually changing our mindset. Mindset, they change the action. And action can changes our neighbors, then societies, then whole world. So significance of UNAI is the changing the world, hunger, poverty, all problem through education. This is very different from traditional method of helping developing countries. In the past, we usually gave grant, loan, unconditional. Then after having the, you know, having, they'll ask more. I think the Secretary Ban Ki-moon's idea is changing the world and solve the all global problems through education. So the UN have a millennium development goal, and it called MDG. MDG is can be solved through education, through elementary and higher education. So UNAI actually using university potential of the academic potential and vision and through action, so that can change the world. This is the significance of the UNAI.
So through education, it's about instilling attitude and confidence.
Yeah, right, right.
President Adams, the need for international cooperation on higher education is acknowledged all over the world. What is the background for this globalization of universities?
Kent, we're in a very unique time in human history. If you look at the origins of the university and their function, the first university was founded in Bologna around 800 years ago. And the function of the university was to transmit knowledge and to transmit civilization. And that was a time when change was very slow. In fact, you rarely noticed any change from one generation to the next. What's unique about this time is change has accelerated. Even in this last decade, the world has changed so radically because of technology, communications, transportation, that it's almost unrecognizable to some of us. A decade ago, social networking was the ability to talk glibly at a party. It's a completely different definition today. Universities understand that our traditional role of transmitting knowledge and civilization has changed because the world has gotten smaller, it has gotten more complex and more interrelated. And therefore, a new role universities understand is that we really got to help us understand each other to help our students communicate in ways that are contemporary and reflect the reality of the world we're in. It's a new responsibility that we are coming to acknowledge.
So colleges and universities must change as well, that's the point.
And that's a challenge too. Great challenge.
Professor Milgram, why does the United Nations want to involve the academic community?
I can hardly answer for the United Nations, but I can say as an institute that we believe that every institute must have international connections and collaboration with our, with other universities and academic institutes around the world. Unfortunately, not all the university know how to make these connections and with whom. And here comes the United Nations with a very important role, first of all, as a facilitator. And I think that it can build connections and collaborations that could not be available without the help of the United Nations. And as an educator, I would say that the United Nations is playing here like the responsible adult. As a chemist, I would say that the United Nations is an initiator and catalyzator of this process.
In terms, Mr. Damodaran, in terms of strengthening the international cooperation for higher education and promoting interactions, what is the ultimate goal of UNAI?
You know, Kent, I think as Dr. Adams mentioned, we're in such a different phase now of international cooperation because of the rapidity of it. But you know, look for instance at this wonderful backdrop behind you. Now, when whoever designed it, designed it for personal satisfaction, probably knew that someone someday would appreciate it, but there's no sense that this was going to be something global. Now, we have two almost contradictory impulses. You have scholars who work in loneliness because they need peace, undisturbed, to be able to work and create, accomplish, and be remembered. And you have others who want to be energetic and to cooperate with others and reach out. The point of UNAI is that there's room for both, the lonely scholar as well as the cooperator, so to coin a phrase, because even individual scholarship, intense and isolated though it may be, can make a difference. And I'll give you a very simple, simple challenge if you will. Go through the list of Nobel Prize winners, not for peace, not for literature, for chemistry, physics, medicine. Look at the discoveries that they have been recognized for. You will find that each of them have made a difference to people's lives. That is what the United Nations is set up to do. So when those two aims coincide, then you have an absolutely cooperative and mutually supportive approach, and that's really the mission of UNAI.
To expand on that, Professor Milgram, what is the first step in creating international project for higher education?
First of all, we must remember that any project that is done is project not only between universities or institutes, but first of all, between people. And that's why the first condition is mutual trust and respect and understanding that both, or more than two, both institutions are coming in equal situation, in equal level, and it doesn't matter if it's north and south and then developed and developed. Believe me, when you are coming to make a connections with one institute, you must look straight in the eyes to the other people and then understand that this must be a win-win situation. And only from this point of view, you can begin, and this is the first step.
I think you're saying that the horizontal communication must be established.
Yes, and then the sky's the limit.
President Kim, the history of universities in Korea is relatively short compared to that of the West. However, many universities have grown substantially with the help from foreign nations. Could you explain the development of universities in Korea?
Yes, history of Korean high education is relatively short. In Europe, maybe 400 years old. And in Japan, maybe 200 years old. Korea, about 100 years old. And so the high education actually started about 100 years ago. And so one of the earliest, the first national university was Seoul National University. And other one is, you know, established by the missionary from the Western countries. And actually, the Korean high education actually started after Korean War, say in 1960s. Until 1960, high education in Korea mainly focused on undergraduate, not for research. In the 1960s, Korea started for industrialization, and they need some higher education, like the master's level, PhD. Until that time, many Korean universities, they didn't focus on, you know, graduate school. The first graduate schools established by government was the KIST through the age of USAID. USAID, they helped establishment of the Korea Advanced Institute of Science Technologies. They are focused on producing masters and PhD. After that, private university focused on research was Postech, Pohang University of Science Technologies, 1986. And so after that, Seoul National University, many private universities, they also start, you know, the upgrade of the graduate schools. And so the, I think the KIST and Postech were first momentum for upgrading of the Korean high education. Postech was strongly supported by POSCO because the Graduate School of Science Technologies, they need a lot of financial assistance. So also, the KIST was a government established research institution. That was in 1967. That was helped by USA, Lyndon B. Johnson, when he visited first time in Korea in 1963. And he helped for financially establishment of the KIST. So in Korea, KIST, KIST, Postech, Seoul National University was a main, you know, the higher education institution. That is helped by UN, UNCR, UNESCO, and also USAID. And now, we don't receive any more aid from the foreign countries. But for first in 1960, 70, and 80, it's very essential for having assistance from international community. Now, we have to pay back.
Wow, I never knew these background stories.
Yeah.
President Adams, many universities have flourished through cooperation with other international universities. I'd like to hear some examples of those.
Very personal story, Kent, with my university, Fairleigh Dickinson University. Put yourself, it's 1962 in Bangkok, Thailand, no major universities, and an individual said we need to develop a comprehensive school. He receives a license to create a vocational school, not a university, hires a young individual as a, as president, and asked my founder, Peter Samartino, to sponsor him. So the young man comes and shadows my university president, and my university makes a commitment. They say that the only way you build great schools is great faculty, and so my university sponsored graduate education for two faculty a year for 15 years. My university sent every summer faculty over for curriculum development, partnering with faculty, not directing, but partnering. He even talked the board of governors of my university to go over one summer and talk about governance systems. So over time, we created this DNA alignment, intellectual alignment, academic alignment to help an institution grow. Flash forward 50 years, that DNA alignment, that association is today Bangkok University with 27,000 students and one of the major regional universities. So I asked myself 50 years later, I wasn't there to do that, but I ask myself now, where in the world should I partner? Should I, as a university president, invest my emotional, intellectual DNA to cause that to happen again? In fact, I think we all should be asking that question because it's, it's those kinds of relationships that truly bond each other and create a new.
That's more than 40 years, 50 years.
50 years ago, yes.
Professor Milgram, could you think of areas for academic cooperation between Korea and Israel?
Actually, yes, I mentioned today in the forum that I really admire the attitude that you Koreans have toward education, and we can all see the results in the achievements of your students in international exams, and I think your rank is very high and very impressive. And I'm sure that we shall have much to study from your institute in teacher education, and I think that collaboration could be done in that, in that area. We in Israel have a very good name in innovation, in creative thinking, and science, and I think these areas should be interesting for your universities. And we also have PhD programs that are very attractive for students from abroad, including Korean students, and I am sure that we can also expand this kind of relations.
The level of IT infrastructure in higher education indicates the competitiveness of universities. Could you tell us more about these?
Of course. There's a race underway. There's a race underway in the university community. The tools, the tools have changed and are changing. The capacity of the tools to teach and learn are changing. They're changing radically. The tools are allowing us to connect with each other. We can connect instantly around the world. My university, we wired every classroom so a faculty can walk in, plug into the wall, and be on the internet, and be talking to a global faculty colleague in Seoul or in Jerusalem, live with the, with the students. And the access to information because of technology is so profound, the gateways are down. We have channels of information and access and speed. Libraries are changing. The tools are changing so radically. So what are challenges? President Kim and I are in a race. We're in this race, and how do we respond? How do we integrate all of these new tools into the learning environment, into the doing environment, into the skill set our faculty use, the way our students demand and expect to learn and interact, is a huge challenge, and there's, there is this transformation going on. The new strategy is the Red Queen approach is no longer sufficient. The Red Queen approach is just run as fast as you can in place and you'll be okay. It's no longer okay. So technology is influencing everything we do. But technology has got to be used as a strategy, not as a toy, and that's the challenge for our faculty and for academic leadership around the world.
It seems like the learning process is only the half. You got to do something.
Absolutely, you've caught on exactly right. It's not only using technology to learn, but once you've learned, using technology to do, that's how you change the world.
To connect, to collaborate.
Collect, create, to generate, to, yes, absolutely right.
Mr. Damodaran, the importance for international cooperation of higher education is well acknowledged. What are some cooperation measures pursued by subordinate bodies of UN other than UNAI?
Well, actually, Kent, you have examples right here in this room. President Kim and Handong Global University have pioneered a unique program called Global Entrepreneurship Training, where Korean students work with students in East Africa. And this started even before UNAI in partnership with the United Nations Development Program and UNESCO, the education, scientific, and cultural organization. But I think it really requires the genius of the institution to be able to tap these resources, come up with a workable idea, and get that partnership going. President Adams has talked about new technologies, but I think he would concede that some old technologies are still very durable, and he is responsible for getting United Nations radio programs on university campuses around the world. Because we produce radio programs, but we don't have a radio station. And so we send them to broadcasting stations around the world, and you're in the medium, and you know that broadcasting stations aren't, are rather picky about what they get, and they're being supplanted by television and other means. But campuses still have a very live audience for radio programs, and so thanks to Michael Adams, we have that audience. One of the most recent achievements of Secretary General Ban Ki-moon has been setting up what is known as the United Nations Gender Entity. It's called UN Women. So it's really brought together all the United Nations offices dealing with gender issues, specifically the advancement of women. It's barely, it started in March, so it's barely, barely four or five months old. And within weeks of its starting, they had already established contacts with universities here in the Republic of Korea to work together on programs for women's advancement, because this is a country which has done singular work both nationally and internationally in that area. So I think you will find that UNAI is by no means the first or the exclusive pattern of international cooperation from the UN. But I think where it is unique is bringing these strands together and allowing each institution to contribute according to its own genius, or for that matter, its own set of geniuses or genie, if you will.
President Kim, Handong University has been appointed as a global hub educational institution. Could you tell us how UNAI will administrate the global hub educational institutions in the future?
Yes, the global community is threatened by energy crisis and food shortages, also the global warming, the weather changes, and poverty. And as the founding president of the Handong Global University in 1995, I'm still serving as Handong, the university president. And my focus, our focus from the beginning was a global education, like this Michael Adams, the FDU, was, FDU is a focus in the global education, also I focused, we focus in global education. Handong Global Education is more focused on helping developing countries, because we owed from international community, have to pay back, okay? So the, from 1995, and Handong Global University invited and student from developing country with full scholarship from the beginning, okay? That was recognized by UNESCO. At 2007, UNESCO designated Handong as International Center for Capacity Building for Sustainable Development. We started through the entrepreneurship, education. We continued. Finally, UN recognized, okay? And so it started from the UNESCO, unitwin, like university training and networking center, but now, UNAI, they designated Handong as a capacity building, higher education in this year, 2011, January. There are three components as a role of the capacity building higher education. First one is like education for global leadership through entrepreneurship education. Second one was green technology for green growth, sustainability. And third one is a prosperity for global partnership and connecting between the north, south, south. North means advanced country, south means the developing country. So the three essential role of the UNAI global hub for capacity building, there are three action, three role. First, entrepreneurship, creating from nothing to something by changing the mindset, and this global leadership education. Then the green growth is very important, and so Handong is focusing for green growth for the developing, green energy for preventing the global warming, also some food shortages by developing like super corn project. And also in the UNESCO unitwin for partnership, we are the, Korea has a very unique position to help developing countries, bridging between developed, developing countries. So we are acting as catalyst, and we bring student, we send them to Africa and many developing countries. That's the main role of the UNAI, the capacity buildings hub. I am very thankful to Ban Ki-moon, also Ramu Damodaran. He, we talk a lot, and so UNAI encouraging Handong. Also, we are doing our best. How can we help developing country? 60 years ago, Korea was very, very poor countries. Now, we are in the position of helping them.
Quite impressive. I get the sense of how important it is for leaders to determine, the leader's determination is so important to make changes. Going back to President Kim. Going back to President Kim, will you please share with us one or two projects that you are administering now? And also, what are your plans for the future?
Oh, my immediate action is we like to develop, actually create endless green, clean energy through fusion, atom. There are, atomic energy is a very ultimate energy, but usually atomic energy is by fusion, is atom splitting. There are a lot of problem for, you know, disposal problem. But by combining atom, like hydrogen is fused together, that became helium. And then fusion energy is very clean, endless energy, like bringing star energy over here. That's my first project going on. Also, for helping, for, you know, the food is very important. We are international corn foundations, and so we are like in the process of the super corn. Corn is, actually, corn is a food. Also, corn is bioenergy. There are two sources, corn. One is bioenergy, also for food. This is my main concern, like two project going on.
Wow, that sounds a very challenging project. President Adams, collaboration of universities and corporate sectors is regarded as very important in strengthening international competitiveness. What are some measures to enhance this collaboration?
I have had the opinion that in the United States, that that's collaboration had been responsible for so much of our development over the last fifty years. And that was confirmed today with a friend of President Kim, who, Dr. Shin from NASA, and presented us data that showed rankings of institutional, academic, corporate interaction. And the US and the world is number one, so an opinion was confirmed. And he also, Dr. Shim, suggested why and how that happened. And he suggested that it is largely government policy that both facilitates connections of what needs to be done, that establishes priorities, and then assists with identifying and providing funding. So, you know, frankly, you know, the notion of governmental agencies understanding the power of this interaction is, I think, the primary way it happens. I particularly appreciate, though, also what Dr. Milgram mentioned about faculty, the power of faculty, because it's faculty working with colleagues, it's people to people. I've learned it, it's lesson about organizational structures, organizational policy, and it's more about empowering the mindset of individual faculty to reach out to colleagues, colleagues in the corporate community that causes things to happen. So it's policy and people that facilitate that taking place.
And the policy also comes from people?
Yeah, bet. It's a great circle. It's a great circle.
Professor Milgram, change and innovation are the common interests for all worldwide leaders. Universities also cannot be free from them. What is your opinion on this matter?
I totally agree. I would tell you a story. I am a member of a forum which is called IUT, Improving University Teaching. Includes professors from many universities, I would say, all over the world, that meet once a year and talk about method to improve university teaching. And I see the frustration of some of them, because they know that when they come back to their institute, they can do what they can do in their class, but they cannot change anything else in the institute. And because, as Professor Adams said, it's a policy and people that make the product. And without policy, people can do as much as they can. And so for them, who are lucky like us, to, that we have the authority and the power to make change, we can make change. But some of them told us a story. He came back to his university and with some suggestions, and got the answer, this university, of course in Europe, exists six hundred years. You want to change things in one or ten years? And this kind of university will not survive. They will sink. And because changing is the name of the game here. And if universities and institutes will not adapt themselves to the changing times, the changing academic situation, they will not survive.
It seems to me that by education, you can better communicate, and by communication, you can create and change.
I absolutely agree.
Mr. Damodaran, what, based on your own experience, are some obstructions in creating international cooperation in higher education?
The obstacles in cooperation and research, I think, are first of all, financial, in the sense universities are often under-resourced. Second, there are problems of visa regimes. Scholars cannot travel freely from country to country, there are political obstacles. And I think, thirdly, also, we still have to acquire a sense of collaboration rather than competitiveness. So in other words, people, rather than competing up to a point and then realizing that they can get much further, working together, continue to compete and work in silos. And, you know, it takes tenacity and a certain purpose, as Dr. Milgram said, when you try and find this connection, say, between Israel and the Republic of Korea, and are able to join the dots together. Now, as far as education, higher education is concerned, I think there are two obstacles. One is, and, you know, I'm by no means an expert on the subject from what I've gathered, there are far too many spurious institutions giving less than honest degrees. And people go after these, they get the letters after their name, and they feel they're educated, they go into the market, they claim they're educated, but they're always under false colors. And that, in a sense, diminishes the value of real institutions. So I don't know, I mean, I think my senior academic colleagues here would be far more equipped to answer this than I am. But obviously, there has to be some measure of standard setting so that employers know the worth of a truly educated employee or student, rather than someone who is ordinary or mediocre but has paid the money to get a dubious degree. But that's essentially, I think, where the dangers lie.
That has been the real problem recently, even in Korea too. President Kim?
Yes.
It is said that the barriers among nations have been broken down, but on the other hand, the gap among nations are becoming larger. What are some measures to deal with this situation?
Yes, actually, with globalization and poverty is a problem within nation as well as between nations. We have to reduce poverty problem within nations and between nations. And right now, many higher education, they are, you know, they make a league, top school, Ivy League, or whatever, they have, they leave. Or undergrad, and in the poor countries, developed countries, they have, they don't have, there are no actually, you know, the exchanging or, you know, the relationship. That is a big problem. So knowledge gap getting bigger and bigger. So what you can solve is exchanges, collaboration, partnership between developed and developing countries. And I am not, you know, talking about technology, because technology, what they need in the advanced country, and they are so high sophisticated, actually, it's not useful in developing countries. There's some appropriate technology, like, which can be used in the developing country. So appropriate technology is the, we can train, you know, people, educate people, appropriate technology which can be used their own countries. So I think, you know, for solving this poverty problem, and the advanced countries, they should educate people, not their standard. And so what they need in their own countries, and if we have educate people in undergraduate, like the maybe master's degree maximum, then they could go their own country, they could use their education they learned in the advanced country. So I think to solve the, you know, the poverty problem between nations, cooperation, helping developing country through education is very important.
Professor Milgram, all countries of the world are interested in strengthening core capabilities and fostering internal competitiveness. Sufficient funds and research climate are regarded as the root of core competitiveness in universities. What is your opinion on this matter?
Competition is a part of academic life. And competition is the, I would say, is the most ancient and strongest motivating force. And I don't think that we want to ignore it. But we also know that, as I mentioned before, it, we must build on this, on this competition, we must build cooperation that takes into account the competition and the differences, but understands the win-win situation and the main target that is more important than the competition. And we call it co-opetition, cooperation with competition.
There's two ideas in one. I'd like to ask each one of you, you can make it short. What, I'm going to start with Mr. Damodaran, what are the goals that the universities in the 21st century should pursue for strengthening international competitiveness and promoting interactions?
You know, earlier today, when I was speaking at the forum, I said the United Nations has the unfortunate habit of being very fond of acronyms. And I suggested we should have an acronym for SEOL, Seeking Educational Opportunities for United Leadership. And what I mean by that is that the academic community should realize that together with the United Nations, it can be a partner in leading change, not working for change, but leading change, and in seeking the opportunities inherent in education to affect that change. So I think that really should be the defining movement, if you will, of our two great causes working together.
How about President Adams?
I think that the imperative is for universities to create world citizens, individuals who have the skill to look across the river and see people just like them, individuals with the ability to look at problems through the eyes of others, individuals who can be proud of their national origin but also understand that the problems that face humanity do not stop at national borders for passport control. We're in this together. We've got to solve it together.
It sounds like you were talking about fundamental friendship.
Good idea.
President Kim?
Yes.
How about your opinion?
In order to compete, many university education are focusing on accumulation of knowledge, okay? Higher and higher. But foundation is more important, relationship are more important. In Chinese character, like the human being, like this, foundation, integrity and honesty. Without this integrity, honesty foundation, if we accumulate just the knowledge for competition, going up, up, finally will fall down. So we have to educate, like whole person education, not only the knowledge, have to, you know, the honesty, integrity base. So we have to, you know, the found, you know, whole person education is very important for competitiveness also.
I get that the progress has two components. One is competition, and one is, yeah, what did I put?
Live together.
Cooperation.
Cooperation, yeah.
New partnership.
That's it, yeah. Live together. Like this, very unstable, okay?
Competition and cooperation.
Cooperation, yeah.
Competition. Lastly, Professor Milgram?
I agree with my friends, and, but I would like to add one word, flexibility. Think that universities, institutions, and countries must be flexible, must see the situation, must understand what is going on, and adapt themselves to the situation and not stay in, in Israel, we say, that the fatal mistake is to prepare yourself to the previous war. And some universities are doing it, and I think there must be flexibility, there must be change.
That's the end of the questions. This is very enlightening for me, and it's a wonderful honor. Thank you for coming. Thank you for coming.
Thank you, Kent.
You're quite welcome.
Thank you.
We appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Yeah. Visions and tasks of universities are to accelerate the initiatives of global academic impact on higher education. I appreciate illuminating ideas, honorable leaders. Tomorrow, we will discuss South-South cooperation on higher education. This ends today's program, How to Strengthen the Global Initiatives and Cooperations in Higher Academics. That's it for us. Thank you.
Thank you.